Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to our Tupelo Council Meeting of September 21st. At this time, I'd ask you to stand. Ms. Rosie Jones will lead us in our prayer. Remain standing as we have the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Chad Mills.
May we go ahead? Dear Lord, thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for letting us, allowing us to gather here tonight and make informed decisions. Dear Lord Jesus, bless us in everything we do and as we go forth on tonight. In Jesus's name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll now call this meeting to order, and the first thing I'd like to ask would be our Vice President, Mr. Bryan, for a confirmation or amendment to the agenda and the agenda order.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the agenda and agenda order with the addition of item number 21, which is the approval to submit a 2021 M.T.A. program grant application for Ward 7.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a motion by Mr. Bryan. We have a second by Mr. Beard. All in favor? That would be unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll now go into our proclamations, recognitions, and reports agenda, beginning with proclamations. We have none, okay? Recognition of Girl and Boy Scouts. I don't see anyone in here tonight, so employee recognitions. We don't have any. Public recognitions, I'll begin with Ms. Nettie.
I would like to thank the City of Tupelo for the support that was given to the Williams family during his passing. We had several events that drew people from all over the United States, and I was so happy with the type of gestures we did because it left us with a good image when they had the business to leave. So I know that the family will be sending, thank you, note Lee Williams was a famous gospel singer, and he was from Tupelo. And his funeral was at the Coliseum, and they had a memorial concert in Gumtree Park. So I'd like to thank you for that. And I also would like to mention the passing of Sam Bell, who was one of Evan's Presley friends. He passed away, and they had his memorial service this past week. And he was really a strong community person, and he's left a great image in our community also. So I'd like for you to be in prayer for both of these people.
Thank you, Ms. Nettie.
I don't have any.
Lynn?
Nothing.
Ms. Rosie? Ms. Janet? Chad? That's the end of our public recognitions, and now we'll go into our Mayor's remarks. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say a few things from our past few weeks. We had our 9/11 stare five, we could go Saturday. Appreciate Chief Avery for getting that together. Councilman Mills and Councilman Bryan both participated, and we kind of had a city relay, not them, but Scott Costella, and Luke Randall, and Don Lewis, myself, and a couple of others kind of tag teamed that instead of doing it all ourselves. And also, at the same weekend, we had several things that police had to do, a couple of motor K's, a couple of funerals. I want to thank Chief Clayton for coordinating all of that. You know, things are good. We've got Donald May coming back. We could go from a week from this Friday. So it's, things are good in the city. Now to our feature presentation. I want to introduce Park and Rec Therapy Director, LeAnn Maddick. She's got a little presentation she wants to do tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan, and City Council for having us tonight. As you can look around and see, we have some special guests in our chambers tonight. So I would like to bring up some of my very special friends. Gregory Hudson, will you come up to the front? Go to the very center. Dana Ellis. Madison Dennis. And Taylor Rosenbaum. Taylor and Dana have some bling with them tonight, but anyway. Okay, so over, I've been at Park and Rec for 16 years, and over those years, I have saw these athletes, they've displayed so much hard work and determination to excel in various sports through Special Olympics. They have represented us very well on local, state, national, and even world levels. They've won many medals, as you can see, and I know for a fact their rooms at home are full of medals that their parents see on a regular basis. In the early summer, these athletes, they went to Biloxi to compete in Special Olympic State Games, and I know that competition was very tight. Gregory, Dana, well, they all participated in swimming this year down in Biloxi. In 2018, some athletes even traveled to Seattle, Washington to compete in the Special Olympic USA Games. Madison played in flag football, Gregory was swimming, and Taylor played golf. I got a chance to go as the Mississippi swim coach. Still, to this day, it is a week that I will never forget. 3,500 athletes, thousands of coaches, and 10,000 volunteers. I would like to add that Taylor has represented us at World Games in Los Angeles, California in 2015, playing Unified Golf. So that's a lot of recognition, but we kind of have an ulterior motive here tonight. Athletes, there's something I really would like to share with you. You're going to Disney World. You all have been selected to compete in the 2022 Special Olympics USA Games in Orlando, Florida. The Mississippi delegation will be made up of 123 athletes, 28 coaches, seven support staff, and five staff members from Special Olympics Mississippi, for a total of 163 in our delegation. So Mr. Terry Chanel is here with Special Olympics Mississippi from the State Office, and Ms. Renee Hinton, and they want to present to you with your certificates and your T-shirts for USA Games. Can y'all come up?
You are an official member of the Mississippi delegation that will be going to Orlando next summer. Will you excel?
Yes, I will.
Dana Ellis, we would love for you to be part of our team too and represent us in swimming. And Gregory, we have a repeat swimmer here. He swam in Seattle. Will you swim for us in Orlando? And Taylor, this is all that for you, right? We're going to carry the links up in Florida, bring back a gold again?
So I also get to go as the Mississippi swim coach again this year. So, hey, guys, what do you say we go bring home some gold? All right? I'd like to get a photo with Council and Mayor Todd, if y'all will please come up.
Could you guys slip your shirts on, please, real quick? Here, we can help you blind, so you just slip your shirt on. Help this and just tie that shirt on. All right, he's going to hold, we'll just want to get a picture, okay?
Ms. LeAnn, will you get up there, please, for us? We'll all come back next year and tell you all about it.
Thank you.
I love this, like, one thing, because without this woman right here, without this, she does not want me to say this, but I'm going to tell her. She has made everything possible for everyone, and we appreciate you. Yes.
That was absolutely awesome. Mayor, you don't want to follow that, do you?
Absolutely not.
Okay, I just checked. Okay. Well, now close the regular meeting and open the public agenda, beginning with public hearings, number one, and the matter of public hearings for lot mowings. Do we have anyone to speak to that? We don't have? Number two, and the matter of hearings, I'm sorry? It's okay. We'll go to item number two, and the matter of hearings regarding demolition of substandard buildings. Anyone to speak to that? There are no appeals. We'll go to the citizens' hearing portion. We have a request to speak, Mr. Lindsey Patterson. If you're here, there he is. Mr. Patterson, you would. Tell us your name, where you live, and normally it's five minutes, but seeing how big you are, you just speak as long as you like.
Well, nobody wants to follow up, and that was quite the presentation right there. So my name is Lindsey Patterson. I'm from Avery, Mississippi. I'm employed here at ICC at the Belvin Center, and this week is our Adult Ed Literacy Week. So I've spoken with some council members, and I think it's y'all's, whoever's able intention to come and visit the Belvin site, and I'm kind of coming to thank you for participating in that. I've got a little bit of literature right here that is some literacy facts. It's yours to keep.
Let me just take one and pass it.
At the Belvin Center, that's more workforce as opposed to Fulton and Tupelo, where you get your more traditional pathways. But we served, last year, we served around 400 students that we considered that we met and retained for 12 or more hours. We had right at 90 high school equivalency graduates. The year before, we had 150. So you're talking about, right out of the Belvin Center, and the five counties that we serve were graduating roughly a 3A, 4A high school. So we're trying to do a lot of good and give back to the community and kind of mold and shape employable individuals. So again, I want to thank you for agreeing to participate in hearing tonight. I want to leave on a success story. A few years ago, we had a gentleman sign up to take class. At the age of 16, he lied and got into the Navy. He was supposed to be 17, and the Navy recruiter said, "If you tell anybody that I signed you up, I'm going to call you a liar, and you're going to put me in trouble." So he served for four years, gets discharged down in South Texas, and works for the power company down there, moves back to Monroe County, and works for the power company there, works his way up to lead lineman. And the employees with the power company there are complaining about the sheriff, how he ain't no good. And so this guy said, "Well, I'll tell you what, I'll run for sheriff." And they said, "You are doing." And he said, "Y'all just trying to get rid of me." So anyway, he runs for sheriff. There's 12 of them that run that time. They call him the Dirty Dozen. He was elected sheriff, served for 16 years, and ended up retiring with the state. He drove a school bus there in Avery to finish out his retirement. But at the age of 79, he enrolled in our adult ed program and in the early stages of dementia and kind of anailing health, and completed at the age of 79. So that's kind of a story I give my students, and that guy, because he got with the Navy and never finished his high school, that was kind of his crutch, you know? I didn't have to do it. I was an elected official, but that gentleman was my dad. So this is, when I talk about adult ed, and especially ICC adult ed, it's something near and dear to my heart. So again, thank y'all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Patterson. This time, we'll go to the action agenda, which we have no items. We'll start then with the routine agenda, beginning with item number four, and the matter of approval of minutes of September the 7th and the 15th.
I move that we would approve the minutes of September 7th and 18th, 2021.
We have a motion by Ms. Davis, a second by Mr. Beard. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number five, and the matter of bill pay.
Make a motion, we pay the bill.
Second.
I have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Mr. Lynn Bryan. Tonight, the bills were paid by Travis Beard, Chad Mills, Lynn Bryan, and I did a little bit of it, and we were watched closely by Tracy Dillard and the big man back there, Mr. Johnny Timmons. All in favor, paying bills? That's unanimous. Thank you. In the matter of advertising and promotional items.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the advertising and promotional items, and these items would be to, for Harper Collins, for $4,987.10. Those are Goodnight Moon Books, follow the newborns born in the Northeast Mississippi Hospital. It's a real nice thing that we do. And the Tupelo High School Boys Soccer Booster, $75. Thank you. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. In the matter of appointment of Lucas Berryhill to the Police Advisory Board.
Seven, you skipped.
You skipped one.
Skip number seven.
I'm sorry. Number seven, in the matter of 2022 petty cash award.
Make a motion.
We have a motion by Chad Mills, a second by Janet.
Oh, I'll do it.
Okay, Janet Gaskin. Ms. Kim Hannah, would you care to come up and visit with us for a while?
Yes, thank you. This is just a housekeeping issue. Each year, we're required to close all of the petty cash accounts at the end of the year. That time has come. September 30th is our year end, and these accounts that I've listed before you will be opened October 1. If you approve them, they have the amounts listed out beside, as well as the person in charge of keeping up with that cash is listed. So we're just asking to open these back up October 1, and this happens every year.
Any questions for Ms. Kim? All in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Number eight, in the matter of appointment of Lucas Berryhill to the Police Advisory Board.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Lynn Bryan, a second by Mr. Travis Beard. Mayor, is Mr. Berryhill here or Lynn?
No, he's not here. Terry Goins, who represented Ward 2, has stepped down off the Police Advisory Board, and I recommend we approve Lucas Berryhill to take his place.
Any questions? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number nine, and the matter of approval to submit 2021 M.T.A. program grant application.
I move that we would approve the submission of the 2021 M.T.A. program grant.
We have a motion by Ms. Nettie, and we have a second by Ms. Rosie and Ms. Abby.
Good evening. Yes, this is just a Mississippi Department of Transportation application for grant funding, which is due next Wednesday. This is the Transportation Alternatives Program. With this funding, we will be able to construct a sidewalk. This will be in Ward 4. It's divided into two parts. Academy Sports north to the apartment complex on 145, and the other is south of Academy Sports to Thompson Square, where Rivers located. We do have a 20% match for this funding.
Thank you, Abby. Ms. Nettie, I know you've got some comments about that.
I have some comments to make on this. I've been working a while for them to get these sidewalks up in the area where there are no sidewalks, and it's really kind of dangerous walking on the highway, the street area. And so I'm just hopeful that this grant will be approved, and I hope that the council will give support to this because it's a very needed area, and that will give them the opportunity to walk in the Kroger Street, Kroger store area, as well as going over to the mall areas, which we encourage people to do a lot of walking and keep good habits.
Any other comments? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Abby.
Thank you.
Item number 10, and the matter of ratification of Major Therapower Program Phase 7 Engineering Contract.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Ms. Gaston. Dennis?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Bringing this to you, if you'll recall, this was approved by the City Council at the meeting on September 7. We've since sent it around for signatures by the mayor and the city clerk, so let's just complete our process to officially ratify this contract.
Any questions for Dennis? All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Number 11, in the matter of lot mowing.
Second.
Did you make the motion?
Janet.
Janet, okay. We have a motion by Ms. Gaston, a second by Mr. Travis Beard. Tanner?
Just ask that you all approve the attached list of lots that be mowed this next week.
I'd like to thank Tanner for working on this. He's done an excellent job, and I know I have a lot of areas need to be cut in Ward 4, and I'd just like to thank you for getting this done because this really helps to beautify the community when the lots are clean.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Happy to do it.
Any other questions or compliments for Tanner? All in favor? That's unanimous. Stay right there, Tanner. Item number 12, and the matter of review slash approve slash reject action to demolish substandard buildings.
I move that we approve the action to demolish substandard buildings.
Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard. We have a, you'll second by who down here?
Rosie.
Rosie.
Rosie, Ms. Rosie Jones, okay? Tanner?
Yes, tonight, there are two properties for you for approval for demolition. First would be 206 Ray Street, and the second is 3492 Robert Kennedy Drive. 206 Ray Street is a house that was severely damaged in a tornado earlier this year. The owner at the time is now deceased, and we believe this house is public hazard, and ask that you approve the demolition, or maybe the rest of the demolition of that property.
Can I speak on that?
All right. If someone, let me get through this motion, we would suspend rules and do this. All in, well, should we do the motion now, Ben?
If you want to suspend the rules to allow her to speak before you vote.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow this young lady to speak. We have a motion by Janet Gaston, a second, Ms. Rosie Jones. All in favor? Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, your name, where you live, and you have five or more minutes.
Okay. My name's Teresa Norwood, Tupelo resident. 206 is my brother, which is the late William Gardner. You know, he worked for the city for about 46 years, and right now, we're going through a probate on it. So therefore, he had no will, so we're going through the probate. So we're having an issue with some of the siblings agreeing, really to make me executory over the thing so I can get everything done. We have a few people that wants to buy that property. So if we could give us, to the probate is over, we're either going to sell the property or it will be taken down, because I have one sibling wants to sue me because I'm going to go through this point. And I just told her, since it's no will, we have to go through the probate and do the right thing. So I told her, I'm not trying to tear anything down, but it just has to do, you know, in order. So if the board would, if you could give us some time so we can go through this, and whether the, I think it's about three people wanting to purchase it, whether they're going to do it and do whatever they want to do, but that's what I would ask for you guys for tonight, okay?
Yes, ma'am. What we will do, if you will talk to this gentleman right here, he'll be able to tell you the procedures that you can go through to extend the time on this, and I'm sure he can help you work out something.
Okay, okay. Thank y'all so much.
Could I ask this, now, who is something, could I ask a question?
Yes.
About, how much time do you think it's going to take to get all this done?
I know probate is 90 days, the attorney told me, and we would have been going through to this point already, but we have a few other siblings. It's 10 of us siblings left. So you know, when you got a large number, some is not going to agree. So we got a few that does not want to agree with me being the executor, even though they live far off, you know? But, so we don't have to subpoena them to court. So it's going to take a little bit more time to get this done. He's saying 90 days, it could be longer. It depends on the subpoena and the court date.
Okay. Anybody, anyone else have a question for the lady? Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We'll now go back to item 12, and the matter of review slash approve or reject action to demolish substandard buildings. Do we, will, do we, you need to say something before that? We do have a motion?
We have a motion.
And we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Tanner? Just discussion wise, if we go ahead and approve this, Tanner, is that something you can work with her on the 90 days?
Yes, sir. I would ask that the, I would remind the council that we, to get to this point, you know, we go through a process that takes a significant amount of time, and I would ask that you go ahead and adjudicate these two properties so that we can at least stay on course, and I'm happy to work with the property owners to ensure that to ensure that, give them ample amount of time to get their belongings out. We will not demolish the structure without working with and speaking with the owners at that time. So I would ask that the council approve what's on the agenda tonight, just to keep that process on track.
Thank you, Tanner. Any questions for Tanner? All in favor of the motion? That's unanimous, thank you, Tanner. I'd like to say, on item 13, 14, and 15, and 16, we have items that has to do with the Mississippi Habitat for Humanity. One of our council members is a member of that board, Ms. Janice Gaston. I'll have to ask her to recuse herself at this time. See you later, Janet. Item number 13, in the matter of resolution declaring surplus certain real property located at 115 Highland Drive, parcel number 077Q-36-086-01, Tupelo, Mississippi, and authorizes the conveyance of the property to Northeast Mississippi Habitat for Humanity pursuant to Mississippi Code, Sections 21, 17-1, 3B, and 21-17-1, 11.
I move that we would approve the resolution for 115 Highland Drive.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Davis, we have a second by Mr. Travis Beard. I got you. I'm getting out after that. So, do we have, Tanner?
Yes, sir. We have an opportunity here to take four lots that the city currently owns, have acquired over the last few years through donations and purchases. All four of these lots were prior homes that were burned or destroyed in some manner, and somehow the city ended up with those four lots. Habitat for Humanity reached out to us a month or so ago, asking or looking at ways the city could partner with them, how the city could assist them and their goals. And we got together, looked through the properties the city owns, and came to a consensus that these four properties would make sense for the city to donate to Habitat, so that they can get homes rebuilt on those four properties. Those homes will be owner occupied, and we will be getting these lots back on the tax roll. So I ask that you approve 115 Highland Drive for the city to donate that Habitat. This was a home that was burned in 2019, and the city acquired it August of 19, demolished the remains, and we've had it ever since.
Any other, any questions for Tanner? All in favor? That's unanimous. We'll go with item number 14. Yes, yes, please.
More of a privilege here.
Thank you.
If you would just stop after the address, I think that would get the, keep you from having to read the rest of them.
Just do the address.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir, okay. This would be in the matter of resolution declaring surplus certain real property located at 318 Lumpkin Avenue.
So move.
Second.
Did you make the motion? Chad, Chad McManus? Man, y'all got me going. I apologize. He made the motion, and was it you wrote it that second?
I did.
Okay, council, is there any shortcut for Tanner?
I'll just say, I'll just say this, too, was a house that burned. The city acquired it and demolished the rest of the structure in October 2019. I would ask that you approve this transfer to Habitat as well.
If there are no more questions, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item 15, in the matter of resolution declaring surplus certain real property locating at 2001 Nail Street.
I make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rosie, a second by Lynn Bryan. Tanner?
This lot, the city acquired in November of 2012. The house was in disrepair. The city acquired it and demolished the structure. Again, it's been a vacant lot the city has owned since November of 2012. I ask that you approve the transfer to Habitat.
All in favor of this motion? That is unanimous. Item 16, in the matter of resolution declaring surplus certain real property located at 323 Monument Drive.
I make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Rosie Jones, a second by Chad Mills. Tanner?
This, too, was a house that burned in 2016. In April of 2017, the property owner donated the property to the city, and now I'm asking you to donate it to Habitat.
All in favor of this motion? That's unanimous. And item number 17, in the matter of review and a, yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Jan. Welcome back. Item 17, in the matter of review and approval of a contract with the PACE Group for the recruitment of a city planner.
I move that we approve the contract with the PACE Group. I second it.
We have a motion by Ms. Janet Gaston, a second by Ms. Rosie. Tanner?
Yes, with Pat Faulkner's upcoming retirement, city planner, I ask that you approve this contract with the PACE Group, so that they can conduct a broad search to recruit our next city planner, and go ahead and get this approved, we can get that search started this week.
Any questions for Tanner? All in favor of the motion? That's unanimous, thank you. Item number 18, in the matter of list of current unmarked vehicles.
I move that we approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Travis Beard, a second by Ms. Nettie Davis. Chief?
Yes, thank you. We ask you to approve this list you have on marked vehicles that the police department is currently using.
Anyone have any questions for Chief? And by the way, we've looked at this yesterday at our pre-council meeting, so it's not like we're doing this real quick. We've looked at that list yesterday, so, any questions? All in favor of the motion? That's unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Item number 19, in the matter of approval of RFP 2021-013CO, Points of Sales System.
I move that we would approve RFP number 2021.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Nettie Davis, a second by Lynn Bryan. That would be Kevin.
Yes, sir, thank you. Our Point of Sales System for our concession stand is a huge revenue generator for us. Our current system has reached life's end as far as support and upgrade for software and hardware. So we issued an RFP, two companies responded with proposals. We formed a committee, graded these two out, and chose BiServ to be our next system. So we're asking for the council's approval, so we can enter into good faith negotiations with BiServ.
Anyone have any comments or questions for Kevin? All in favor of that motion? That's unanimous, thank you, Kevin. Item number 20, in the matter of CVB Minutes, September 8th, 2021.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Lynn Bryan, a second by Mr. Travis Beard. All in favor? That's unanimous. We'll now go to item number 21, and this would be in the matter of approval to submit 2021 M.T.A. Program Grant Application for Ward 7. Ms. Abbie?
Thank you. This is another grant similar to the one prior. This would be a Mississippi Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternative Program. Also, the funding will be used to construct another sidewalk. This will be in Ward 7, and the sidewalk would be from South Park Manor Apartments down to Longdale Elementary School, likely be qualified as a Safe Routes to Schools project. This also has a 20% match.
Thank you, Abby. Do we have any comments or compliments from Ward 7, or anyone? I think it's gonna be a nice addition.
I think it will be, too. Thanks for everything.
All in favor of this motion? That's unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll close the regular session now, there is no items, there is, there are none, there are no items on the study agenda. Executive session.
No, President.
There are no items for executive session. I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Chad Mills. We're now adjourned. Thank y'all.